11 Mr. Planning Board Meeting for October 7. 6:30, open public meeting for 751 Research Drive Continental Stone, a site plan, major modification approval.
I'm David Corzans with Handy Engineering here on behalf of Continental Stone. Here before you for a site plan modification for a permit that was originally issued back in March of this year. A few changes have been made to the site plan in regards to ease of construction. One of the major changes is that we've decided to lift the warehousing floor area to be level with the second story of the front part of the building. In doing that, it helps alleviate the cuts and fills that are required in the back portion of the lot. So now the back parking lot area is actually at grade where it currently sits today. So that alleviates some of the grading issues.
Does that make it two-story or just extra height?
It's, the warehouse space is still going to be a single-story.
Right.
But if you remember--
You're just making the roof line the same.
Yes.
Correct.
So if you remember that original building--
I do.
--had the two things in front. Now that warehouse floor is going to be level with that second floor. So that helps alleviate the grading issues. In doing that, we also have to update this drainage system. If you remember, there was a detention basin that was going to have sheet blow from the roof be captured including the back parking lot area. In that place, we're going to be doing underground storage system that will provide the same level of treatment and heat rate ventilation that was originally approved. The second major change that was being made is that the original front office and showroom area has been expanded. So now it's the full width of the building. In doing so, that does increase the parking count. Per zone, we're required to have 29 parking spaces and currently we are showing 34. So we're still compliant with that aspect of it. Besides that, the general layout of the site remains the same. And general utilities are remaining in the same locations. If there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
We still have plenty of room for the trucks to come in to the loading docks in the back.
John, I have a question. I'm just curious, this has nothing to do with our jurisdiction, but what was the reason for the increase? Did they realize, they just--
Just--
Yeah, what was the--
Using construction. They had it kind of kicked in and whatnot, so now they're doing it.
Okay.
Do you have some more storage on that?
Yep, so we're still proposing having stone storage in the back in the parking lot area and at the end of the front parking lot area too.
What is this relationship to the registry?
The registry is actually located a little further down here. So as you're driving up, it's going to be in the upper right near the utility poles.
Oh, okay.
So John, just DPW, fire, and police, all approved.
In building, I have that.
In building.
In building, we all approve. Okay, good. Do I have any, do you have anything else? Do I have any questions or comments from the audience? Do I have any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, fine, okay. Do I have any questions? Comments from the audience? Anything, any questions from the board? We've gone through this once before, so it's just, this might be a substantial change, but it's more to the topography of the land than anything else. And then I was there today, so I was, you know, familiar with what they were doing. I just wanted to verify that I was looking at the right place. Okay. Do I have any other discussion?
Make a motion.
Motion is on. Any discussion? Get a second, Tom. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries. We'll go to a call to order. Yeah, the next one is scheduled for 6:45.
Okay, Patrick McCarty, Fred Frederick.
Here.
Paul Wiser, Savo Chafoni.
You.
John Susan.
Here.
Carol Latourius.
Here.
And Thomas Carey.
You.
Yeah. Minutes.
Make a motion accepting.
I have a motion to raise a second on accepting the minutes.
Second.
Given to us.
You don't know what can do it.
Yeah.
That's right, just move. And John.
Yeah. Any other discuss, any discussion?
No.
Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries. Plans submitted on old business.
You can do the A and R's.
Do you want to vote on--
Both A and R's.
Can we, can we vote on Continental Stone?
Well, when we do the-- Yeah, Vegas, okay. Okay, I don't have an A and R on this one.
You don't?
That's-- We have, yeah, we have old business, we have--
This is my--
A and R's.
No, I think I got the old agenda.
Oh, your plans submitted and old business.
No, here, take mine.
There I am. Okay, now bring me up to date. 3.3 A and R for 489 Grant Street.
It's just a simple A and R. Basically, there's an existing house there. We're subdividing a lot of it.
Still over the, what do you need, a half feet or an eighth of it? That's-- That's an eight.
That's 21,000, what you need.
I'll take it.
I'll take that. And frontage, or not the frontage.
So this is one lot and you're making it into two?
Right. We just need 80 feet of frontage.
Right, normally 80 feet, yeah.
There you go. He's got it all.
Each house-- At 100.
He's what?
Okay, any--
What's it?
You have the--
81, 81, okay, good.
He's got 81, he's got 101. Well, he's got 94, 95. He's got the square footage. Motion to endorse.
Is that the existing house?
The one on the front where he said the number, right, yeah.
Yeah.
A second.
I'm not sure. Because it's starting to get a little bit into this pork chop thing that we've had before. If you look at that--
He's got the frontage.
--if you look at that angle on that right, you end up with some of the, the front yard is actually behind, okay?
And whether for the house.
But you need the 100 feet, 101 feet.
He needs to put the house.
The 100 feet for the house, right.
He's got the house back, right?
Well, the new house would be back probably where the shed is. But I'm talking about, this is where we ran into a problem before, was where you had these, these skewed lots, lot lines, where people had a problem.
Well, look, he's got--
I just want to bring it up.
He's got 81 in front of him though. Yeah, he's not like a normal pork chop would come in with 30, 40 feet of frontage.
Yeah, well, he breaks it down.
I know, I know.
You got 81 at the front, but then--
They turn it up a little.
You got 200, or you got 94, so you got 170, 175. You take 100, so that leaves at that narrow point, you get about 74 feet.
Yeah, but that's all he needs for frontage is 80.
He needs 81 for frontage. What I'm saying is you go from 81 down to about 74.
Yeah, but it doesn't say, as long as where the house is, you got 100.
The house will have to be in the back.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, I just, I want to bring it up because--
You know, I can see it.
--this is getting close to going back to the pork chop lots and the ones that we had a problem with. The luck is, this lot is very deep. So it probably will work. But it's getting right on the edge of being a pork chop lot.
Well, and we have to keep in mind it's an approval not required, which we all have to take into consideration as-- is frontage on a public way or where the public has the right of access? I think that would apply if it was a subdivision, but--
No, that would apply here, but at the same time, that's fine. I mean, he's got an awful lot size.
It works.
And, and it works, but it's, it's close.
I mean, it would be, if, it's going to be up to the building inspector when he proposes to put a house there for a building permit, so.
Well, they'll have the 101 because they probably put the house up by the shed. They have a long driveway.
The house has to be 101, but where it should be.
It's got to be at least back to 101.
Right.
Got to be at least back with a 101.
Correct.
I just wanted to point it out. Okay. Do I have a motion? Have a motion myself, seconded by Tom. To endorse, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries.
One of the neighbors liked what you did before.
Is it going down, six years ago?
He can't.
Yeah, so, something Marcus, one of the bankers.
Because then he wouldn't have the 100 feet of his.
Been a thing here for five years.
3.2 A and R for 26 and 28 Bootell Street, Bootell Street.
Apparently, the last--
We have one lot that has two buildings on it. And owner is looking to--
Who was it, you and Ryan, or your--
Each lot have its own building. Now, as you can see, one of the buildings-- They actually have each an amount from a previous owner to allow that.
To allow the building on?
Yeah.
Really?
I can show you.
Aye.
It's a, it's a grant of easement recorded.
How old is it?
It is--
So they build an error? Is that what happened? And then they wipe for forgiveness later?
Honestly, I couldn't find out why, what happened.
That's probably it. That's messed up. It is messed up. It's messed up.
This was in 83.
Is that one lot that you're making into two lots?
That was before we were here.
Yeah.
Before I was here.
Are you moving this line?
You sure, Seth?
Well, what are you doing here?
Why? Why can't it?
Because they don't own it. The lot, what's the, the one lot on the border?
A house?
So there were two buildings on one lot?
Yes. And the total for this lot was only 7, 800 square feet.
Was the residence being, residence being--
So this is a pre-existing encroachment. It's not, you're not creating any encroachment.
No, this is pre-existing.
These houses exist.
That's why I'm saying they haven't--
The whole thing is pre-existing.
I just never seen that.
No.
Have you ever seen it?
No, we've never seen it.
I'm not going to say we've not seen it, but not--
No.
Well, this was actually-- 83 is before the right time.
So you're just taking-- Okay, you're just taking this one-- And dividing into--
You're not aging well.
How do you, how are you getting the 2 feet of frontage?
I'm not aging well.
Jesus.
I don't. There isn't enough--
He's only 32.
53.
33.
We're going with 5181L saying that you are entitled to an A and R endorsement to separate--
You're trying to separate the property so they can sell?
So that each building will have its own lot and it won't be two buildings on one lot.
If the building wasn't on there and they were trying to split it, we would have them note shape that it's not to be considered a building on.
Building on.
But there's already a building on it, so that note isn't really--
That's messed up.
Hidden, yeah. But in the future--
Yeah, it's the same idea.
They wouldn't be able, if something were to happen to the building--
Maybe, maybe it's never been financed. Has it been financed? Maybe it's just been a cash deal?
It could be. I would think it happened. Because if anything happens to that building, they can't do anything.
But they, they actually granted them an easement?
Yeah, it was recorded.
Oh, was the bank?
That's a recorded easement for this building. So is that, now where's the new lot line? That's this one here.
No, that's the existing lot. This is 3.7 that runs right between the two houses, the two porches.
So-- Lot one is conforming. What kind of houses are these?
They're, um, one's a two-family, I think one's a three-family. There's the D bit.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Where's the new line? This is the new--
The new line is the one in the middle. They're splitting a lot. So this is all one lot, they're adding this, so this is conforming and this is way--
It's a subdivision because that building's over there.
And, and this, this piece of land here?
Has a building on it.
Right.
That has a building, but that, you have an easement?
That encroaches, but they granted an easement in 83 allowing that encroachment. And allowing them to maintain the building as it is over line.
Right to, right to enter upon real estate for, for purpose of making repairs and doing maintenance. On an encroaching portion of said dwelling house, that's--
Crazy. That's just--
That's--
It was better off--
I don't-- I had a, I had a-- Shed on, on, I had to move the shed to get a mortgage. It's like, are you kidding me?
Yeah. Either they must not have had a mortgage, I'm not sure what they--
That's crazy. Somebody dug a hole in it.
Maybe it was on purpose.
Well--
I don't know.
I mean, it makes it better for lot one. Lot two, it just makes it--
Well, it's never going to change.
Never going to change.
It's already--
It's there.
They wouldn't sell them.
Not conforming lot.
I don't know, must be, they probably wouldn't.
I looked at this with Peter Niall as well. And we thought at the very least it's making the situation a little better, at least for the one. So that's-- It's already a best.
Yeah, the best bet is, I don't know, where's the closest property? Would be them to sell this piece of--
They probably can't, they probably don't have the room out of their own, but those are all tight posts.
Yeah, that's true.
Can you, can you tell me again why, I'm trying to figure out why you don't need the accurate frontage? Is that the one where you just need at least 20 feet of frontage?
Residence B.
Well, that's--
No, it's-- They need 50.
Right, well, the state--
We'd say 50.
Right.
He's the one that's 50.
It's 50, it assumed area. Well, if you're on Bootell Street, you have 26 and 15, right?
If they wanted to create a building lot, we would need the 50 feet of frontage.
But this is just giving two lots.
They would never be able to build on it down the road, but there's already--
It's already built out.
Okay.
Are you giving us the shares?
Just give me what I--
I mean, if you think you need to go to the C and O, I'm curious. I'm just--
You're going to have to explain to someone.
That's not explained to us, but--
This is the most extreme case.
So they have an easement only to do repairs and fix? That's it.
So they can't live in it?
Well, they're living in it. Somebody's got to be living in it.
Well, that's not what the easement says.
On the building, does the owner have--
So he's paying taxes on two--
Okay, the division of attractive land on which two or more buildings were standing into separate lots on each of which one of such building remains is not a subdivision. The applicant deserves an 81p endorsement under this exemption, even if one of the lots created by the submitted plan violates provisions of the applicable zoning regulations.
What is it? Yeah.
We're just talking about--
Standing lot. I think-- The division of attractive land on which two or more buildings were standing--
Does anyone have an easement? I'm sure.
Well--
It doesn't include the--
The easement makes it better for the owner of lot two.
Yeah.
Business, like that.
In 83.
Jesus, that's crazy, that was so close.
Okay, well--
Well, I think they can--
What is that, 20 feet?
What they should-- Can they, can they--
6 and a half.
Encroach these people and buy what they need?
It depends on where the--
I'm talking about how far is that house over?
That's got to be--
It's almost half.
I'll bet you 15 feet.
The survey is rep from that area?
Probably 15, talking--
Probably a house right next door to it.
No, it's a little less than half, so-- Probably 10 feet.
Really?
10, 11 feet.
That one is--
28.
Yeah, the whole lot.
Oh, there you go.
It's the one with the black under it. Yep.
Oh, those are the two, that's one lot?
Yes, with both on it.
Oh, it doesn't, and so--
So that's just one lot.
This is the house and, this is the lot in which it's encroaching upon, or this one, this one?
That one, yeah. There are house, right?
So it's like, the line is like, then it-- Obviously, this isn't, it, then, you--
Yep.
So it's right, right here, this, this is all this lot.
Yeah, well, you got this--
Turn to right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so-- I mean, they still have enough of a setback, I mean, I'm not telling private owners what to do, but--
Yeah, you can't really, because here's this other house and this property is right here. It gives a driveway right there. Then you got the house and then you got this other house.
Better to have a driveway easement than a house easement, though. All right, did you want to make a motion to endorse?
Yeah, you really couldn't sell it because you got a driveway right here.
Well, it cleans up, you know, I'm all for homeowners doing what they need to do to preserve their land and I'm also for--
Yeah.
--better planning and it does both, it's just a matter of--
We can't look at it, figure it out then.
They should fix that one more step to make it better.
Whoever buys like two better than one.
Yeah.
I don't think I'm paying for it.
I don't know, I, I made a motion to endorse.
I got a motion over here to endorse.
Second.
Motion made in second and to endorse. Any further discussion?
The answer's your question, is there any more?
Here and now, now call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Actually, I have some pork chop in there.
Aye.
Next door neighbor.
Okay. Back to our public hearings.
This is like the--
Oh, go to the--
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
This way, we don't have to look at Pat, this guy--
Yeah, okay. Okay, we'll continue on to old business and Continental Stone. Old business, 4.1, 751 Research Drive Continental Stone. Site plan, a major modification approval.
I actually don't see, if they have the adequate parking. Nothing's really changed except for the filtration for water that went off in the side of the building and squaring it up. I think it's good. I'd make a motion to approve.
A second. I have a motion made by Seau, seconded by Tom, to approve. Any further discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries. Okay, now we're going to our 6:45. Open public meeting for 152 Hamilton Street for site plan approval. Yep, 6, 6:46, open up public hearing for 152 Hamilton Street for special permit approved for work in a floodplain. At 6:48, open public meeting for 156 Hamilton Street for site plan approval. At 6:50, I make 6:50. Public hearing for 156 Hamilton Street for special permit approved for work in a floodplain. 6:52.
No, no, we can't do that.
Yeah, we can.
Yes, I can do it, 6:55. Open public meeting for 162 Hamilton Street for site plan approval. And 6:54, public hearing for 162 Hamilton Street for special permit approved for work in the floodplain. Got them all in, we'll admit it to spare.
Good evening, everybody. Patrick McCarty, McCarty Engineering. With me tonight is Brian Marchetti, also with McCarty Engineering, and Dr. BJ Coakley, who's one of the applicants this evening. First of all, let me apologize for the condition of my plan. It's been damaged carrying the note out of here a few times.
Well, this ain't called good for you.
You should have had it laminated.
So in all seriousness, thank you for having us this evening. I'm here on behalf of three applicants. The first is 162 Hamilton Street, which is JCN Properties, which is Dr. Coakley's project. The second is New Hamilton LLC, which is 156 Hamilton Street, which is attorney David Roachford. And the third is Backlot Realty Trust, which is 152, which is the Doors Unlimited building. It's also the same owners as Redline Mall Systems. So the plan you have before you, it represents all three projects. Let me start first with Dr. Coakley's project. This is the former Redline Mall Systems office. Across the street here is High Country Workwear and to the left is Woodcom Insurance. It's an existing 2,500 square foot building that we're proposing to fully renovate. Got it down to the studs on the inside and renovate the front portion and also put a 2,000 square foot addition on the rear that will be fully built out as the new Coakley Family Dental. There is existing parking along the front and the side that ends right here. We're proposing to reconstruct all of that new, as well as expand the parking out so that we have enough parking suitable for patients and staff. We're proposing a retaining wall along the back of the building. As you all know, this is in the 100-year floodplain. When the building was built, the 100-year floodplain was actually the windowsill of the Redline building. So it has a 13-inch reinforced concrete slab. I can't wait to cut through that to put in plumbing. And it has, it's wrapped in ice and water shield and has gasketed doors. All this crazy flood-proof construction that they had to go through at the time. The floodplain maps have since been revised to drop the elevation to 322, which is a step in the right direction, but honestly, I still think it's a major miscalculation by FEMA. If you think about it, the finished floor of Macy's is 301. So if we have a flood at 322, we have a lot bigger problems going on than--
Macy's is on the ground.
Yes, Macy's, the whole mall, Summit Eld Medicare, everything would be underwater. There's no, it's not like we're in a big valley that would be trapping all that water and water would seek its own level. So I think eventually FEMA is going to get the maps right, but unfortunately, these are the numbers that we're stuck with today. The building already has water, sewer--
I think thinking of that local, localized flooding because of the wet area behind there.
Okay, since you asked, I'm going to have to go through the whole explanation, so--
Oh, God. Go ahead, let me calm you down.
And ask the question.
Uh, as I'm sure John will remember, because he's been here several years. There was the Meat Paper Dam next to Baker Cadillac. That was a wood trapless oil dam.
Yes.
So there was an eight feet of elevation change on the upstream side of that dam, which caused the tailwater to back up, start backing up towards this area. You then have the arch bridge at Route 13 that they did the repairs on a couple of years ago. So as that water staged up, you got into the cross-sectional area of those arches and as you go higher and higher in the arch, that area is getting smaller and smaller. So that caused further staging up of the river. So there was 13 feet there and then it backed up tailwater that came all the way up, continuing up the Nash or through like behind Gearworks. And then it came in the back of the old Mackenzie property and would flood in this way. So they took the dam out and they redid the model, which caused a drop in the floodplain, but it only got us six feet from 328 to 322. Taking the dam out itself should have got us eight, because it's free flowing now. And then we should have gained more at the bridge. So I think that's where the, they didn't expand their study far enough to look at the full effect of the dam being on. And so I think you're still getting some of that tailwater effect that really isn't ever going to be there. But it is what it is and unfortunately, we're stuck with that. So we have this retaining wall proposed that's currently here. It's kind of Z-shaped. It goes from Roachford's building across the back of the parking lot and then tails off in the slope. We're just picking it up and jogging it around our dumpster pad and reconnecting it to the one. So the 322 will be on the down--
Downside on that.
--down low side of that.
Right.
So the retaining wall will act as a bumper for the floodwaters. Then we have spot grades on the Roachford building that holds the water away from those two buildings. And then we're making up for that on the front of the Redline.
As I say, does it help that building?
So like, just like my father's always done at the Gagny, for the Gagnys down in Seastown. As one building was torn down and another one was built, we always kept track of the different flood storage volumes. And we, you know, moved them around Seastown. When PetSmart came down, we had extra left over and some of that got used. And some of that got used for Summit Eldercare and so on and so on. So, we've really taken the same approach here, um, for Redline, because at one point, they owned all of this. This was their office, this was their parking lot, and this was the door shop. And when we did the site plans for this building, they were the owner. And they also owned the land on Land O'Lease Lane at the time, and we created flood storage over there in order to build the first base. So, we've managed this globally, uh, since, I don't know, maybe two thousand and six, which is why we've taken the same approach here. Technically, this site and this site don't require site plan approval, uh, because they're not meeting your thresholds. But since we're looking at it globally, we said, uh, let's just be safe and file anyways.
What should you have to reclaim?
Brian made this lovely graphic here. So, the green is the area floodplain being filled. I scribbled on this during the Conservation Commission hearings. But the green is the area that's being filled for Dr. Coakley's. And the, this green is what's being filled for the Roachford project. And then the red is what's being compensated. And this table on the side here shows that we're creating excess of what we're, uh, filling. Conservation has reviewed all of that, and they issued us three orders of conditions for the three projects, uh, two weeks ago. So, getting back to Dr. Coakley's, it does have, uh, water, sewer, electric, and gas already on site. No change proposed to the water and sewer. Gas and electric connections are at the rear of the building, so we'll simply be extending those down the driveway and moving them to the back of the addition. The parking essentially is there. We're just, you know, priding up the front and re-striking down the sides. There is no dumpster pad now, so we've got a dumpster pad with a full vinyl fence enclosure on that. This is nicely landscaped already at the street. It's a nice pear trees and mulch, uh, same as this mulch area in between Coakley and Roachford. And so, we're proposing to keep that the same. Add a couple more trees at the back where we're extending the parking, and then all the green will be, uh, loomed and seeded when we're done to create the lawn area, as it looks today. Just be a little bit depressed. For the Roachford building, if you recall, this was originally permitted as two stories. The reason we did that was because it was in the floodplain at the time, and we couldn't come up with anywhere to compensate. So, it was six thousand. The parking at the front and the driveway were all as proposed, and three of these six parking spaces were shown on the original plan. Fortunately, Attorney Roachford's practice has really continued to grow over the last few years, and he needs the additional space to support his staff, and he needs a few more parking spaces as well. So, that's what we're showing there. And this is a nice landscape area here now, and we're copying that same theme down and as well as adding a couple trees. And then the Door Shop project, they have a unattractive cinder block retaining wall here that makes an open air loading dock. So, it's good on days like today, but in the winter, it's terrible to try to come outside with a fork truck and unload a semi-trailer and bring door stock back into the building. So, we're proposing to tear all that down, um, re-grade that whole front slope. And this creates a eight hundred and seventy square foot loading pod, one drive-in door, and one dock-like door. And then this is just a reconfiguring of the parking and showing a handicap ramp due to the elevation change between the three twenty-two with the parking lot and the three twenty-six sixty-five at the building.
What are the parking requirements? And we are arguing with them? I know on the first, we're, we're good.
Yeah, we're way over on Coakley's. We're way over on Roachford, and there's actually the parking, this driveway, when you come into the Door Shop, there's a whole bunch of parking all the way down the side and across the back. This is not striped. Now, it's like a no man's land of pavement where trucks kind of come in and just park here, there, and everywhere.
Right.
So, the only really restriping we're doing here is just these three spots to provide the handicap access. So, all three have, uh, much more than necessary on the parking side of things. You know, to me, I think it's great to see three businesses, well, two, two existing businesses that are doing well and looking to continue their growth and expansion in Westminster. And excited to see Dr. Coakley bringing his practice to town. Um, we have some exterior renovations proposed to the building right now. It's not unattractive, but it is just really a basic box. So, we're going to add a cornice detail around the top to give it a little bit of a flair. We're going to add a bump out over the front door that comes out three feet. It goes higher than the main building. It has a cornice around the top to give a little architectural detail. The building will be repainted. We're going to cut in some score lines because it's an EFS building just to break it up a little bit, so it's not just one mass of a building. And then Attorney Roachford's building already has those details, and those will continue through into his. And then the Door Shop is really out in the back at that point. So, conservation's approved. We did get some department head comments.
Snow storage pad?
Yep, snow storage is shown here and all around. They push it this way now, and they push it off the back. They push that way on Roachford's. Push down into this area, and then everything at the Door Shop goes out back. The one comment I recall from DPW is they wanted a test pit. So, I went out there maybe two weeks ago with John Roseberry. We did a test pit.
No, they were last.
Yeah, yeah, but I thought I grabbed it, but I...
This is, this is the existing wall. So, we proposing, we're proposing some underground infiltration chambers here, so John wanted the test pit. That shows the infiltration basin, yeah?
That shows infiltration in there. Yeah, the whole system in there.
Right now, there's one catch basin that just daylight through the wall. So, we're putting two new catch basins into a manhole, goes into a whole subsurface, and then comes out through the wall. So, we're, you know, greatly improving the water quality here. On the Roachford piece, there really is no, there's no grade. So, if we were trying to drop a structure in, there would be nowhere to daylight here. So, we just have a crushed stone filter strip. And then we're reducing impervious on the, uh, Doors Unlimited. So, these two, the new impervious and the reduced offset each other on these two lots. And we're mitigating the new impervious on Dr. Coakley's lot. So, this is back from September seventh was the responses to the department head comments. We had to fix a couple labels. Uh, we had, they asked for this graphic, which has turned out to be very useful for presentations. Just, you know, makes it very clear where we're filling and where we're compensating. Adjusted the floodplain calculations. We put a detail for the filter strip. A cross-section on the, um, underground infiltration and the retaining wall detail. All of those have been made to the plans, and Kristen received a set of the revised plans. A test pit was excavated.
W L.
Yeah. We went through, on the, uh, the Hundred Year Storm, so the basin, the infiltration basin is partially underneath the Hundred Year Floodstorm elevation. And so, DPW was saying, well, how is that going to work if there's really a Hundred Year flood? And that was my whole Macy's discussion. I think we have bigger problems than this infiltration basin working. But even still, we propose a duct build, which is just a rubber gasket that goes on the pipe. It takes very little pressure to open it, but doesn't allow the water to come back. So, if we did have that flood, it wouldn't surcharge. And even if it did, it would just surcharge to the point where it spilled out a catch basin one and then flowed back over the curb line. It's never going to make it to the building, because the Hundred Year flood is three twenty-two, and the finished floors are three twenty-five five, uh, on both buildings. Talked about the impervious between the ones balancing. We have the TSS because we have, um... We have a TSS removal worksheet. They were asking for that. And, uh, we checked off redevelopment on the stormwater management checklist. And this is a mixture of redevelopment and redevelopment, and so we resolved that. And that's it. And then, uh, the Board of Health made the same comment about the infiltration basin.
Right.
Below the Hundred Year flood.
Yeah, they, they repeated.
Yeah, they repeated the DPW. I, I didn't see any police and fire, did you? I don't recall seeing anything.
Nothing here in this package.
Oh, sure.
Where are this, the trust, uh, deliveries for the first building going? On which side?
The deliveries for that?
Down, down below.
Oh, so this...
They came in late.
This is a twenty-four foot wide pre-roadway.
Oh, okay.
So, they can come in here.
Yeah.
We just colored the new part of it. That's why you don't see it. So, this is an existing twenty-four foot wide roadway. They come here, back up to the dock, and then drive out. No backing out onto the street. And then there's a new side door proposed here, uh, for UPS. No, they do everything.
You take the trees out of the parking, parking spot?
What's that?
The trees that were in the parking spots.
Oh, yeah, those, those are existing ones that have to go, and we're relocating those. Those are there now, yeah.
Police had no comment, and fire approved. No comment, no additional comments.
Okay, the other question we've been asked by Conservation is schedule, and it's immediate for Dr. Coakley. We did a page turn with the architect last week, Wednesday, and just went sheet by sheet to make sure everything is, uh, looking good. We're using Brent Heinzler, who's out of Pittsburgh. You guys are familiar with his work.
Right.
He designed central mass oral surgery, a lot of stuff for quality drone. Because, you know, we like to keep it local, so, uh, local design team, local dentists, local contractors, ready to build the job. So, we're hoping that we can receive approval tonight.
Okay. Okay, I'll open it up to the audience. So, I have anyone in the audience which is to make a comment rather than sitting there grinning?
I tend to talk enough for everybody?
The apple doesn't fall far.
No, no, I think you did well. Your dad would be up for at least fifteen minutes. Okay, um, I think the biggest concern here is the conservation and, and the detail that they have to... Because this is, it's a sensitive area, and, you know, even with your explanation on the floodplain and the backup, you know, that's, it's always an issue. But, uh...
So, Redline's building was built in two thousand and four. That used to be Claude Bazina's Crane Building, so...
Yeah, that was way back.
And then Peter Reynolds, who you all know, his father owned the, this other back lot that used to be the Mackenzie Construction Yard. Peter says, as long as he can remember being a little kid, he's never seen more than a few inches of water in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, and that's, he's down at like three eighteen, so the Hundred Year flood would have been ten feet of water over his head.
We're on that Hundred Year flood, yeah.
Okay, uh, looks good to me. The way I have, what I'm going to have to do is, uh, for, for the, for, for closing these hearings, uh, I'm going to recommend, take a motion in block to close the hearings.
So moved.
And then what I'll do is I'm going to take each one individually, uh, for the vote.
Second.
Okay? So, motion made and second in block to close, one, two, three, four, five, six, uh, seven hearings.
Thank you very much.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no, motion carries. Six. Now, I'll take it individually, uh, for a vote. For open public meeting for one fifty-two Hamilton Street for site plan approval, do we have any, uh, to close the hearing?
I thought we did that.
We did that in blocks. I don't think that... Now, I get to vote. Okay, now we're going to vote.
Vote on in block.
No, I can't. I can't, because I've got public hearings and I got public meetings.
Oh, okay.
Okay? So, I, I have to take them. So, um, it's closed, so we'll go to the first one over, public meeting for one fifty-two Hamilton Street for site plan approval.
Motion?
He's just taking a vote.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve with, um, all department head conditions, second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no, motion carries.
We did adapt it. Why did we take it in block?
No, no, just to close the hearing.
Right, right, but we're doing the votes.
We have to take them individually.
Simply.
Right.
Yeah. Open, a public hearing for one fifty-two Hamilton Street for special permit approved for work in the floodplain. I have a motion.
Did you make the motion, Sam? With conditions from...
With the conditions from the department.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Here and then, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no, motion carries. Open public meeting for one fifty-six Hamilton Street for site plan approval.
Motion approved, second.
I have a...
Conditions.
What's the motion, Sam?
Department head conditions. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no, motion carries. Public hearing for one fifty-six Hamilton Street for special permit approved for work in the floodplain.
Motion approved with public...
We have a motion to approve with the department head comments.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Here and then, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no, motion carries. Open public meeting for one sixty-two Hamilton Street for site plan approval.
Motion to close.
Motion to close.
Motion to approve. I mean, yeah, he, he, he isn't trained yet.
We got two more. You got it right.
He just started.
Yeah, you just started thirty years ago.
Thirty years ago, we still can't get it straight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no, motion carries. And the last one, public hearing for one sixty-two Hamilton Street for special permit approved for work in the floodplain. Sal says...
Motion to approve with the department head comments.
There we go.
Yeah, the motion made and saying, saying goodbye Fred. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no, motion carries.
That's communication. Good luck.
Good luck, guys.
Thanks very much.
I feel a little anxious when you finish that.
Next time, please come in with that dome.
I'm working on it.
Used to be, used to be construction.
Yeah, the dome is, uh... Yeah. No, it's not a D.
No, no.
Oh, it's good.
I think it's part of that wall systems thing.
Yeah, there's, there's like three businesses in there.
Well, you know what? That, that geometric design is supposed to be hurricane and tornado proof.
Well, that's great.
From a standard wind up to two hundred and forty miles an hour. Just so you know. So you know.
Probably.
It's true, though.
Let's move on.
Hurricane and F four.
Communications. Land Board recommendation, scheduled public hearing, the City Council petition, eleven eighteen. Committee and ordinance review amend chapter twenty-two of revised ordinance and summary entitled zoning by amending section twenty-two dash fourteen, adoption and amendment to require notification of, of abutters for zoning changes, and the costs associated will be paid by the petitioner. Wait a minute.
The new one, yes.
Don't we already require them to?
Uh, this is for a zoning change. So, if you have a zoning change and they're saying, they, I don't think they have to notify the abutters. It is, the hearings are published, but the notice are not...
No, if I have a zoning, then, no, no, can't be done. Because the zoning change affects the whole city. And that, literally, what this says is that I'd have to send a notification to everybody in the city.
Who's, who's petition is it?
It's a City Council.
It's a City Council petition.
You're right, John, right?
Some zoning changes, yes, would impact, you know, it might be, right, applied to all of the RA zone or something like that.
That's crazy.
But, um, maybe they mean when there's a, the line change, like at the Central Graham Street project, maybe they...
I think we need, okay, we got to set the hearing for it. But at the same time, I would like to, okay...
Can we have a copy of the actual petition? Oh, you have it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but it's for, yeah, it's not for a zone-wide change.
I can see, if I've got a zone, a localized zone change.
Everybody...
If somebody wants to change something, fine. But if I've changed in something in MU one or, or, or commercial, that means that affects the whole city, and I'd have to send out a notification to everybody in the city. So, I don't know how specific they...
If it's a change...
So, they do outline draft language. Well, this will be in the packet for the, when we have the public hearing.
Okay.
So, you have that, sort of the whole section they're adding here.
This may make, this may...
Clarify.
It may clarify. It may just be the way it's summarized in the agenda.
The summary is kind of, okay.
Okay, that's fine. Can I keep this? Is that okay?
Okay, schedule this.
They'll never get it back.
November sixth.
You're not going to get it back.
So, November sixth happens to be three weeks, which gives us time to advertise it.
Great.
Um, so, we could do that. We don't currently have anything...
Six thirty, yeah.
Scheduled.
November sixth at six thirty?
Yes.
Like a motion.
Motion by Fred. Second by Sal. Do I have any further discussion? Seconded by Sal. Do I have any further discussion? Yeah, I'd like to get a copy of that also.
You take mine, you're the chair. I defer to you. I'll get, I'll get a moment. Can you email those?
Is this another copy? Can I have this?
Thanks.
Was there something else on the city council that we're supposed to go to? Are they?
Maybe you, but not us.
I think Mark Bonanza wants to talk about marijuana, but there's nothing scheduled.
Okay. No, no, was the, the. Driveways.
They approved that.
They approved ours.
Yes.
So it finally went back to our petition, right?
Yes. So we had filed a petition to say shared drivers are not prohibited, are prohibited. And there was a lot of discussion and they tabled it for a while and eventually they did vote to approve that petition.
Our petition. That's what I thought. And I just, and there was some discussion. And I think Dombrowski says he's going to come in with an alternative petition, but ours would cover him in the interim.
Right. And then they changed, he changed his mind. They decided to go forward with approving that petition. And if they wanted to change it in the future, they could, issue another petition again. So that should be all, all set now.
Okay. I just want to, oh, okay, on this, on this November 6th at 6:30, any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Both say no, motion carries. Do we have a director's report?
Um, no, but I would like to offer, so I have a project at 279 Crawford Street. They did bring in their, their application and being that we have three weeks till the next meeting, um, if possible, I'd like to schedule and they just need a site plan.
Yes.
For an open public meeting.
Okay.
Good.
So if we have this city council public hearing at 6:30.
6:40.
Well. Let's give it some time on this.
Well, yes.
Let's give it 15 minutes.
We can open.
6:45, yeah.
I don't, we don't have anything else scheduled for that for right now, but it is three weeks from now, so.
So 6:40, okay.
6:40. If it runs late, you run late, but at least we're over time.
Okay.
So moved. Well, Fred notes that already did it.
No, you haven't. Yeah, motion made and seconded for, what do we call on that?
269 Crawford Street.
269 Crawford.
What is that? It's a new one.
It's a lot, it's Crawford Street, sometimes called Airport Road, so it's right on the town line before, um, in Pittsburgh. In fact, the parcel itself is in Lemonster. The frontage is along the right way, which is Pittsburgh's. So the city boundary runs right along.
Is that?
I'm not sure.
That's in Pittsburgh.
It's a little further.
Airport Sales, is it?
No, it's in Lemonster. On the other side of the road, it's the boiler company.
Oh, it's on the other side.
Is it? Okay, I haven't been out there.
I would guess it would be, yeah.
So it would be, um, a car lot.
Okay. All, uh, motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Both say no, motion carries.
And then, one more thing, um, with the holidays coming up, so we have a meeting on November 6th. The next meeting would be, um, the.
20th.
20th, which I believe is, um, the week of Thanksgiving. So I'm not sure what you normally do.
No, that's fine by us. We'll just have it, okay.
Yeah, we'll do that on the Monday.
It was Wednesday and interfered with Tom's drinking. We couldn't do it. But we're good.
As long as I have porn.
I didn't say anything.
He always drinks on special occasion.
I might be with you.
Yeah, that's okay.
Tuesday, you didn't touch me.
So the December meeting, uh, there's one December 4th, the other one would be December 18th. We could wait and see.
Yeah, the 4th is fine. We'll see what happens on the 18th.
Fourth and the 18th, we'll just see what.
If there's nothing going on the 18th.
A little bit a waste.
You can start drinking early for Christmas.
I think that's it, right?
Motion to adjourn.
Kristen, do you have anything else? I'm not paying attention to him.
No, I think that's it for me.
You're done? Okay, go ahead, Sal.
I'll adjourn. Well, what, you gotta say executive session?
No, no, we're not getting a session.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Both say no, motion carries.